She does that sometimes.
I got the recorder on.
Okay. Barbie's ready.
All right. I'm ready. Bob, you're there?
I'm right here.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to have a village council budget work session to order April 7, 2020, 5:30 PM, Village Hall, 10004 Newtown Road. First up is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes or?
No, but do you want us to say who all's here?
Oh, just for the record, for members that, we have a full quorum, not a full quorum, but we have a quorum existing of Councilman Jamie Lyon, Mayor Pro Tem Kim Vanderburg, myself as mayor, and we have Bob Markelies, Councilman Bob Markelies on the phone with Councilman Robert absent. And did you, did he call him time to say he was, this is just a budget meeting anyways, but did he call, say he was gonna call in?
Yes, he had already sent me an email.
Sent an email that he was gonna call in, okay. So technically, Bob, you are part of the quorum here, so, and we thank you for joining us, and we will, first up, I have adoption of the agenda. Are any changes?
No.
We'll need the motion to pass the agenda as stated?
Aye.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I look, the Joneses are here. Hi, Ann. Hi, Bob. Hi, John.
Next up, we have the budget work session in 2020, 2021, discussion of general budget. We are on, is this Zoom, is that what they call it?
Uh, WebEx.
WebEx, I'm sure, sure.
Okay, I won't get everyone on the camera.
Oh, that's a problem.
That, that should be fine though.
Should, should Bob, like, just call into one of your phones and not through that? So that it can be closer, so we can hear?
Yeah, Bob, you probably don't need to see anything, do you? Cause you, do you have the documents in front of you?
Oh, yeah, I know.
Okay.
I think, I think Bob should just call somebody with a different phone. Call Joe's phone, and then that way.
You can call my phone. You can call my phone. Bob, just call my phone. Just call my phone.
Call Barbie's phone.
For the record, we are dealing with a webcast called WebEx because of coronavirus, so we're having a few technical difficulties with one of the council members from ability to hear, and this is during, try to clean this up before we get to the regular meeting.
Oh, his phone's here. Oh, okay. Hey, Bob.
Okay, that's real clear.
Okay, yeah, no problem. I'm gonna stick you over here with Joe, so that you can hear a little better.
Tell him I'm sending him with his documents. Where are they, Christina? Where are the documents?
He posted them on the website.
Is it just those two? Okay.
We can just tell him where to access them, if he can get on there real fast.
Oh, cause he's, he's on the front page.
Hey, Bob, can you get on the, can you get on the Village Marvin website and pull up the budget, so that you can see all the changes?
Sure, okay.
Bob, we should have you on the air, you wanna say something?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming, beanie mate. No, it's all good.
Okay. So, we're, we're good, we'll turn it over to Christina.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have prepared the final fiscal year 2021 budget. It's actually posted on our website right now on the homepage. In front of you, you have the budget message and the actual balanced budget for the next fiscal year. At the time of?
That is this packet?
Yes.
Fiscal 2021?
Yep, okay. So this is the final version as of today, we did not.
I'm getting emergency alerts for staying at home.
It's fine, you can't mute it, even if you wanted to.
So, we did not, I'm sorry, we did not have the revenue estimates in from the county, we're not expected to have that in until the middle of this month. So we basically, we'll get to the revenues in just a second, we kind of maintain them at a flat base, just to be conservative. But I'm just gonna go down the budget message in detail, so you can kind of highlight some of the, the main goals and objectives. The proposed budget is in front of you is 1.435911, which is a 12 percent, 12.4 percent increase from the previous year's budget, or this year's budget, which is around about $158,000. This proposed budget does have a one cent tax increase, proposed to balance it, which is the 14th year in a row, the village has not had a tax increase, except proposing this year. So this is, this is the first proposal in 14 years that we have a proposed tax increase.
All right, hold on, the way that sentence reads, the proposed budget is balanced, requires a one cent, one cent tax increase, marking the first, the first, okay, got it.
The first year in 14 years.
Yeah, got it, that's right.
And I will note, you know, since 2002, we have had over a 308% population increase, while this tax rate is actually decreased.
Okay.
So the one cent tax increase is estimated at a $100,000 increase in, in property taxes, just, just based on that one cent, and that basically is enough to cover an additional law enforcement officer that we're proposing. And I'm just gonna highlight some of the goals and objectives that are in this budget. We have continued priority of public safety with implementation of new additional dedicated law enforcement officer. We have two additional full-time employees, one as a finance officer and one as a park maintenance employee. The 1% tax increase, as I said, just covers the, the public safety increase. We have continued focus on financial dependency with a zero dollar proposed debt service. We are adhering to Cancel's asset capitalization policy and replacement of computers and other technology equipment as needed. We are observing the practice of matching a 5% contingency allowed by statute. It's not a policy that Cancel has, it's just a practice that we've been doing over the years, so we do have a $50,000 contingency in the budget already. We have 100% of curb and gutter repairs as identified in the fiscal year 20, this current year assessment conducted by AMT. I will note with that, there is no proposed road resurfacing scheduled in this year's budget. It's all curb gutter repairs and replacements as needed. The next sentence basically says that NC DOT has decided they're not gonna be participating this year in road resurfacing, so in order to save taxpayer dollars and be more efficient with our road resurfacing strategy, we're gonna wait till they jump back on board to participate, and therefore, we are proposing just to do the curb and gutter repairs this year.
We weren't gonna do them this year, new rates this year anyway, right? Cause we're on an alternating schedule?
We were, because we, we aren't doing any in this fiscal year that we're in right now. The work took place last fall, so it does appear that it's in this year, but financially, we have not paid for it this year. We do currently have a new website design in place right now, we have the final payment coming out of the website design in next year's budget. We have 4% one-time bonus for all employees to maintain competitiveness for high performing employees. We have funding to absorb healthcare insurance increase, we don't know that number yet, it still has not come in, so I do have some, some money in here set aside that we can move around in case that comes back higher than what we budgeted. I do have a slight increase in training and travel, this is associated with the increase desire to set high quality professional standards, and also, as we're increasing in personnel, we, we do need to have an increase in those line items. We have increased focus on peak traffic control, and that's gonna be year-round this year at Marvin Road in Newtown. Typically, we do that with the school schedule, but we have budgeted for a year-round implementation of those law enforcement officers to assist in peak time traffic control. We have also put in $40,000 plus in the capital needs for parks and recreation, and this is 100% funded capital improvement plan. And this, we also put in a $10,000 capital transfer for greenways and trails construction. We have not done that in years. Typically, we put in money for maintenance, but we haven't put in any for construction in years. This is the first time we've been able to do that. And then we've also put in some money for economic consultants and analysis of the Villa Tanner District, and some zoning and development changes that are needed with Chapter 160D implementation. We have a committed line item for the National Wildlife Community, Federation Community, and that sums up the major goals and objectives. The total revenues come in, like I said, at 1.4 million, with total expenditures equating to the equal amount of expenses or revenues. On the third page, you'll see what's available for spending in your capital projects. So the Village Hall was authorized at, initially, when that project was founded, it was authorized at 964. So far remaining, we have the 859, 224. Same for the farmer's market, greenways and trails. That, Greenway, Greenway and Loop construction will probably be spent this year, based on a couple of needs that we will have coming up, and then road improvements, that 207.
Christina, I remember in the past, we, we always had a, like, a fund of 10% or whatever, that would go towards capital every year, is that still in here?
I think at one point, y'all had something that was called land acquisition, and that was, at some point, turned into another, it was put into another capital project. We, we do not have that.
Okay, so do we do, we don't have any, anything to, as we look down the road, we're not putting any money aside for any of that?
No.
Maybe something we wanna consider, I mean, you know, cause that's how we got to be able to do those, all and have funds there, as we put all these years' money aside, and we kind of earmarked it for this, and now we're, you know, I would imagine, as time goes on, prices may go up, who knows, but.
You can always use your fund balance too, so I mean, you can, you can always spend it out of there.
But I'm, I'm just saving, like, you know, putting a little bit of savings aside, with all the income coming in, and the other thing is, we don't, I was just looking at the goals and objectives, one other additional officer, and can you, for the record, what is that estimated?
The additional officer, 102.
102,000, and with the 1% increase that we're asking, that's gonna bring in approximately what?
100, it's gonna be right at 100. Depending on, we, we, so when you increase your tax rate, you kind of go on different scenarios, based on the budgeted revenue, the actual collections, and then you have, there's, there's formulas that you have to play with, and so we rounded it up, and it was right at 101, with each 101, 141, so we just basically round 101,000.
Right, so we're putting the tax effect this year, which will go into effect in next September, is that correct?
No, July 1st.
Well, it goes in July 1st, but the taxes don't get collected till September or October and stuff, so really, there's a number of months to go by, if we were to put an officer in there, we have funding aside, like, if we put an officer in there in the next couple of months, there's really no funding available for that extra officer until we get to the next fiscal year.
Correct. Unless we have third grade fund balance.
But, the reason I ask, and what would, you know, in the survey, clearly asked for an additional officer, that they'd be willing to do that, and here we are, we're looking at all these things that we're doing, including an additional officer, which is what the one cent is gonna bring us, and it was asked for by the thing, I mean, you don't get these things for free, I'm just trying to point out to the, whoever's listening online or whatever, that the community, we're, we're being very prudent, very, very conservative with the tax increase, given what's kind of down the road here, and we're basically paying just for what we're getting, which is another officer. We're bringing in only what we're putting out, which is another officer, which is what the community asked for.
The tax increase is just to pay for the law enforcement officer, 100% of it.
100%.
100% of the tax increase is associated with law enforcement officer.
Perfect.
And then I did want to let citizens know, that there's gonna be a public hearing scheduled for 6:30 at Village Hall on May 12th, and the document, the proposed budget ordinance and line item detail is on our website at MarvinNC.org on the homepage at the very bottom, and if Cancel will turn their page to number five, you'll see this little dollar bill that's listed in there, and it kind of shows you how $1 of the tax rate is breaking out, broken out into what costs are. 42% of the tax rate goes to general government, 11% goes to planning and zoning, 17.5 goes to public safety, 9.8 goes to transportation, 15.3 goes to cultural recreation, and then we have that $50,000 contingency that's set aside. So, a couple of changes that I wanted to note in your, this document right here, it's the Excel sheet. Agent, any questions on the budget message letter at all?
I do have an update on, we got in a conversation about the three officers and what that was, so I did talk to someone, and they would share that, but I don't know if this is regarding the safety, but I think we'll bring that up when it comes to, are you gonna talk about, any update in the regular meeting about the, anything new that you learned with the contract?
No, I actually have an email in to Sharon Kathy, and we're supposed to meet, we just haven't had time to get with everything that's going on.
As long as we have, we'll have a placeholder for that, cause I can update Council with what I learned about, remember there was a contract with three officers, and then we never had three officers, one officer and stuff, so it's, it's a little bit interesting and.
Open topics.
Yeah, on topics, open topics, yeah. I just wanna make sure we didn't talk, need to talk about it in the budget, because in the past, we had talked about at another meeting, a work session, I think about what, what the contract stated, and what, what that was supposed to cost us and stuff, so. Okay. Sorry.
Okay. So, there are a couple of areas in this document, this Excel sheet, I wanted to call in.
Okay.
This is a line item detail for the budget. If you look at your first page, looking at the columns that are there, the 470 proposed revisions, you can see the numbers that we previously discussed, and how they've changed since we've been having discussions, and those are the areas that I wanted to just kind of point out, the ad valorem taxes went up $100,000, and that's reflective of that one cent tax increase. Going, everything's pretty much the same, and your revenue is going down to expenditures, there's a big jump in public safety, $100,000, which is reflective of exactly that expenditure that we just, or that revenue that we just mentioned. Transportation, this is one that I hadn't increased, there was a calculation error in the initial proposals that we had given you, and we had basically forgot to plug in some power bill funds, so I had to increase the expenditures to reflect the same amount of revenues that were expected in power bill. So if you go up to the top, on revenues, where you see restricted intergovernmental, 141, 345, that number is the exact same as the transportation, because that restricted governmental is strictly power bill, that's it. So those numbers equal each other. There was a decrease in the cultural and recreation, and that was reflective of that $30,000 initial preparation that I had in that capital transfer, that was due to the miscalculation on the power bill stuff, so that's why that number came down. There's still $10,000 in that capital transfer for greenways and trails, I initially had it at 30, so I had to bring that down. And we can go over those, those details if y'all want to. There's been no real changes in general government. Again, health insurance is unknown at this time, so I don't know what those numbers are, we kind of plugged in the same numbers as this year, and what I did do, as I mentioned the last time, is in the administrator discretionary funds, let's see, I think I had about $13,000 in there. Yes, 13, 203, so basically, whatever that increase in healthcare insurance is, I'd planned on taking from that discretionary funds and moving it to cover that healthcare. Typically, Cancel lets the employee absorb the increase for their, for their individual coverage, however, last year, I was able to work at the budget where we absorb all employees' increase, any employees that had dependent coverage, we made the employee maintain that coverage, but we did cover the employee themselves. So we'll bring that back at a later date, but just wanting to let you know that that money is there, shall we decide to do that again this year? Any questions thus far?
No, looks good to me. Good job.
Okay, and then moving over to planning and zoning. No real changes there, everything's pretty much the same, according to what was previously proposed.
What page is that?
Seven. Moving over to public safety, which is page eight, again, you'll see that $100,000 increase that proposed initially was 150, the Cancel revision as of today are 250. Any questions there? We have received our letter from the county, so that number is, is pretty good, pretty solid. Moving over to page nine, transportation, this is a little bit tricky, I wanted to explain this a little bit in detail. So you'll see on the second line, it says sidewalk construction. That's what was proposed in any of the repairs and maintenance that were associated with that assessment that AMT did. You'll see the, the line item that says road repair and maintenance at 44, 345. You can't see the detail in here, but in the actual Excel spreadsheet, I have the number of the total road repairs that were associated with that survey again, and then I have a placeholder for the remainder of funds that we would just have go back into fund balance if that money's not spent. So we're proposing to spend exactly what's, what we're bringing in, but if it's not spent, it will stay in fund balance reserve, all, you know, everything in here. Same thing with the stormwater gutter repair, strictly from that AMT survey. And then, again, curb repair, the 31, 500, same thing there. Other costs are associated with any emergency repairs that we might see that we need. If we decide if we wanna do some seal coating, or anything like that, and then also, I've got monies in here for traffic calming devices, and if you reflect back to the very first page, where the revenues are, you'll see a miscellaneous, and the miscellaneous line item of $15,000. $15,000 of this $20,000 in other costs are proposed to come from HOAs, if HOAs want to pay for their traffic calming devices, we would just pull it from here and get reimbursed based on their reimbursement back to us. So we haven't developed a policy for those traffic calming devices as of yet, but I'm sure a lot of HOAs would be willing to set forth some, some funding for that, to get it done as faster, you know, as fast as they can, so once that policy is developed, and HOAs wanna contribute to these traffic calming devices, we, we basically will pull it from there.
But just to be clear, if they wanted to do it before the roads were taken over, that would be between them and DOT?
Correct.
And whatever they wanted to spend.
That's correct.
We don't get to their speeding issue, if there is one in the community, it's not, because we, we just, we can't, we won't be able to, cause it's not a road game.
That's right, yes. They would have to get an encouragement agreement with DOT to do that, but hopefully, this will be, you know, no cost to the village or other taxpayer residents to implement these traffic calming devices, if HOAs are willing to participate as well. And we will come up with policies to implement actual dollars, taxpayer dollars for traffic calming devices, but we have to figure out how we're gonna prioritize those, so in the meantime, HOA one action, so we, you know, we need to have an avenue to provide that for them.
Okay.
Other than that, that's pretty, everything's pretty much the same, that's what I would do. We will have an increase on the 141 that we actually have budgeted, and we just don't know the exact dollar amount yet, cause we have not accepted those roads as of today, so that number's still unclear, so we're conservative in there, in those estimates.
Because we'll get more money once we accept the roads from power bill.
Yes, and it's not a lot, it's maybe a thousand.
Yeah, but.
Okay. They have formulas based on population and mileage, so. And then the next page, page 10, is the culture and recreation. The only difference in here is, like I said, that the workers' comp went up slightly, and then that on page 11 is actually the transfer to capital. I did take out the Wi-Fi, just so you know, the Wi-Fi apart, cause we're still unclear if that can be done. Greenway loops, Greenway Loop and Park Projects initially was budgeted at 30, and I brought it down to 10, and that's the only change that we, y'all seen. And that, that pretty much sums it up, unless y'all have questions on anything. The budget ordinance is actually reflective here in this document, the numbers are the exact same as what you see here. We will put this on the May 12th agenda for a public hearing and consideration of adoption at that point in time.
Should we have, should we go ahead and move the meeting to here, in preparation for continuing social distancing, so then that way we can spread out?
I would probably recommend that.
Okay, do you want me to add that to our regular agenda?
Yes.
Since I can't add it now?
Yeah.
I'll just do that under new business?
Yes.
And then, we're not expecting any other capital outlays for playground, vehicles, mowers, any of that in this next fiscal year?
No. Whatever was set forth in the CIP that we had previously approved at one of the last meetings.
Yeah, I mean, there's some stuff, but we've already.
With the 5100 that was in there, is that from?
It's 40, there's 43-ish, I think, is what's in there.
So there's really nothing in there? Okay.
So we basically, that capital reserve plan that y'all approved, maybe two months ago, if I'm, if I'm correct, correctly, we took those priorities and put them into the budget, and that's gonna be to write that number. So whatever's in there for this year, is put in, and then next year, will be in next year's. I think there's mowers in there for next year.
Good job. Anybody got any questions?
That's my question.
What do you have?
Yeah, no problem, I'm gonna thank staff, they helped out tremendously, and particularly the jewel issue, where we had a lot of, a lot of work involved with it.
Bob, you have any comments?
I don't have any questions at all, I thought it's very, it's very obvious, so for this one, jury.
Okay. So, from here, then, at this point right now, do you feel that there's any more need for, other than putting this on the agenda for, if, if, if nobody has any issues, I think we put it out to the public if we all agree on it, but you'll have to have a placeholder in May to approve the budget?
Tonight, we're gonna set the public hearing, at tonight's council meeting, we'll set the public hearing for May 12th. We've actually already posted it on the website as of this afternoon, so the public can access via the website and see if they have any comments. They can submit comments to Barbie, they can submit comments to myself, or they can come to the public hearing on May 12th to make a comment.
Okay.
But we vote, we vote on the budget, though, we vote on this on the 12th, right? May 12th?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we'll have the issue with voting, like, if Bob was here via phone, we'll have that settled by then, though.
That's correct. Tonight, in your regular council meeting, you have a proposed set of electronic rules of procedure, only in a state declaration of emergency, so if y'all approve those, then that will be covered.
So it's only in the state? Okay, so not in a regular?
I mean, we can, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, we have no other further questions? I guess I'll ask to adjourn the, motion to adjourn this work session, I mean, sorry, budget work session meeting.
I move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we didn't stop recording, right? We're not gonna go, we got another 25 minutes?
Yeah.
Is that 25 minutes?